Let me call the Berkeley City Planning Commission to order for its regular meeting of Tuesday, September the 23rd, 2014. Would you all please rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a roll call, please?
Martin Smith?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Buckler?
Yes.
Murad?
Here.
Shadle? Morell?
Here.
I have an old thing, I'm sorry. Pop?
Here.
Anne Barnett?
Present.
Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Moved by Commissioner Morell, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Pop.
Any discussion on the agenda then? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Murad?
Yes.
Morell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Smith?
Yep.
Barnett?
Yep. Now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August the 26th, 2014.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Murad, is there a second?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Richardson, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Excuse me, Pop?
Yes.
Smith?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Murad? Murad?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Morell?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes. Any communications?
Just for your information, the request for proposal has been sent out. And to, and I, and it's also on the website, and we have DD eight minutes as well.
Thank you. Now entertain citizens' comments, any citizen who would care to address the Planning Commission on any topic not on our agenda, may step up to the microphone, state your name and city of residence. I will remind the audience that they will have an opportunity to participate in discussion items as we move through the agenda. Not seeing any citizens rushing up to the microphone, I guess I'll close citizens' comments portion. Citizens will have an opportunity at the end of the, towards the end of the meeting for additional comments. With that, I guess we'll move right on into our order of business.
Item number one is discussion regarding possible changes to Berkeley City Code, Chapter 94 Signs Relative to Illuminated Signs. We talked about this a long time ago, and there was, we had noted, I had noted that Birmingham and Royal Oak had the same light limits. I emailed them both, I followed up with Tim Twing from Royal Oak, and then followed up with him again via email, and yeah. So, I don't know why they set that limit. And I don't think they know why they set that limit, is my guess.
Well, you wrote a very thorough report, I must say. Jeez.
A lot of it was cut and paste, but yeah, and I did find there was some-
I assumed that, but it's still very good.
There was some discussion about nits versus lumens and how to measure them, and so I found that. And I know you guys were looking at having a guest speaker, I have not had an opportunity to do that, we've just been busy and shorthanded. So like I said, we have a light meter that measures foot candles or lux, lux is lumens. We can, you know, if we can figure out a way to do that. When I had looked at the Berkeley Medical sign in Cana Lutheran, you have the compare and contrast on the number of foot candles. But I know it's a, it's a very different kind of light with the way it is directional. And when you're on one side of it, it's fine, and on the other side, not so much.
Were you about the same distance when you measured these from each sign, or were you relative?
Well, let's see, and I have it noted, standing on the right-of-way near the sign, so I looked at, if we're going to measure from the right-of-way, which obviously the Berkeley Medical one is at a disadvantage because it's right on the right-of-way.
Right.
And then I looked at putting it right in front of the sign. So I think, if we're going to do, to be fair, we've got to figure out, okay, if it can be on a building, or are we going to require it to be set back from now on? You know, that's what you get into, otherwise you're looking at, okay, if it's a, if it's something that's right on the right, on a building that's on the sidewalk, it's not going to be able to be as bright as one that's set back presumably, on a lawn.
I guess my question would be, when you looked at the Cana Lutheran sign?
Yes.
Were you approximately the same distance as you were when you were measuring the Berkeley clinic?
Well, when I was right in front of it, yes.
Okay.
And one was 41 and one was 14.
That's, that's what I was trying to get to, okay.
If I was standing at the right-of-way, near the sign, sort of with it up over my head, or four feet above grade. I think I tried when I was measuring it right in front of it, I had to, for Berkeley Medical, it had to be over my head. But if that was four feet above grade, you see the difference.
Yeah.
Isn't there also a lot, a lot more light at Berkeley Medical compared to where Kane is?
Oh yeah, certainly, yeah, I mean, you're looking at, you've got, yeah, absolutely.
Time, yes, what about that time temperature sign on Greenfield?
I didn't do that one. I, I, I can do that next time.
That's really bright.
It is really bright. It's very blue.
With two houses on either side.
I think that one has a lot to do with its placement.
I mean, if it were, if it were downtown with the rest of our stuff, it would, it would seem less.
Yes.
And so does it matter where the sign is, then not just in the right-of-way? Does it matter what the adjacent properties are?
I don't, I don't think we can, that's difficult to apply, I mean, it's one thing when it's a different use. But when you look at, you know, inflicting, you know, inflicting requirements on, on businesses based on who their neighbors are, from a business standpoint, you know, my neighbor, you know, the guys on either side of me don't have illuminated signs, so I can't have one, because if I did, it would be too bright, or-
I meant category of business, like business versus residential.
Okay, that's, that's a use group, and-
So, in that respect, you have a business in the middle of two res, you know, between two residential properties. Cana Lutheran is kind of in a partially residential, partially-
Well, and again, a lot of this came about because churches have the changeable copy, and the letters, you can't even buy them nowadays, I guess, I don't know. And somebody loses the key, and it's snowy, and it's cold, and it's difficult. And so I had many of the churches in town ask about, well, could we do this instead? And I had said, no, you can't, and then upon reflection and really reading what our code said, you know, we just say it can't change, we don't say, you know, we just didn't want the scrolling thing. We didn't say that it couldn't be this kind of method of lighting. So I had, you know, sent a letter to all of them saying, okay, you can do this, but it's got to be within these parameters. And so, and Cana Lutheran was the first one that came forward with, okay, yeah, we want, we would like to do this. The ZBA, because of some setback issues and so forth, they ended up, you know, hearing it, and then put some conditions relative to eternating down, which I think is fine. You know, with the Berkeley Medical, it didn't end up coming up that way because it was just permitted. It's certainly something, because this is its own ordinance, we can make the change. And if we're concerned about Berkeley Medical, because this is an under zoning, signs are its own chapter, you can amortize essentially, and you can say, you have to give a reasonable period of time, but you could give notice to somebody that has this kind of sign and say, you need to dial it down.
Got other comments? So what's the desire of the Planning Commission?
I have a question, I-
Mr. Richardson?
Something tells me that we did touch upon this the last time we discussed this topic. If we did, and I've forgotten what was said, I apologize in advance, but what I, what my question is, is, have we researched whether there are industry standards, national standards, municipal recommended standards of any sort that, that are, that base, that are based on some kind of scientific understanding of what, what level of lighting is tolerable to people?
Well, I've researched it a lot. There's no municipal standards per se on lighting. What you find generally for model lighting ordinances are put out by sign companies. And then you have, the other side of it are the ones that want dark skies. And so you're sort of trying to filter out what's the propaganda and what's actual fact, and making decisions-
We did talk about this.
We did talk about it, I know it's been a while, I had to sort of refresh myself as well with this, so. So we did talk about it, you know, I'm happy to, you know, if I can try and find a guest speaker in the lighting or sign industry that wants to come and chat with you, I can do that, I just haven't had a chance to do it.
And the other question I had is, the recommendation of 14-foot candles is based on, more or less on a-
It's the Cana Lutheran model.
Yeah, it's your perception that that, that sign is appropriately lit?
Yes, basically, that, that was it. If it, if we want to dial it back, that's fine, but that was, it's, alternative proposed.
And I can say, I, I drive by that sign all the time, and I don't find it, you know-
Overpowering.
Yeah, I don't find it to be a problem compared to that one on Greenfield. No.
Well, do you want to have, see if Ms. Vanson can get us, somebody to come in and talk about it?
I'll try, I'll try to wrangle somebody.
See if we can find somebody, and then we'll address this, and see what they have to say, to get their commentary, and then maybe we'll do something with this.
Okay, I can do that sometime.
You know, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murad, or Mr. Morell?
You know, before we move on, 14-foot candles, reasonable or not, I'll look and get back at, at how it was originally measured, placing the light meter in front of the sign, probably need a little more definition than that.
Yes, I know.
You know, in front of the sign a block away?
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta-
A meter away, you know, just to-
So we need to brush up if we're going to keep item three, illuminated sign shall not exceed 14-foot candles between sunset and sunrise.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's from some-
Expand that a bit.
A distance of-
Gotcha.
I, I do think we need to have a basis for our decision-
Yeah.
That's spelled out, it underlies the decision, we can't just-
Yeah. You know, that actually brings up another question, so, when the sun comes up, can I just turn that thing up to 100-foot candles? Because you know, when, you know how when you're driving in your car, and you're at night, your, your dashboard is one brightness, and-
Modulates, yeah.
Yeah, it modulates, it actually modulates to dimmer at night.
Yes.
In order to see it during the day, it actually goes brighter.
Yes.
So when you look at this requirement, it's like, well, there's nothing that said I couldn't have 100-foot candles, you know. I'm looking at it from a-
Sure.
I understand what you're trying to do, but it just seems to me like, again, as a guy who tries to circumvent codes for a living, it, it seems like an easy, that's a low-hanging fruit for me.
And I do recall, I haven't brushed up on all of it, I know when I was doing the research, it didn't seem to be, of course, we have a lot of cloudy days in Michigan, but they had, you know, talked about that, that wasn't the nuisance factor of it, wasn't so much an issue during the day, but I-
Understand.
I, but I understand what you're saying, it's always good to set a ceiling.
It's just a loophole, like I said.
Yep, gotcha.
Okay, item number two.
Oh, hold on, I'm writing notes, okay, so I don't forget. All right, item number two, discussion regarding possible changes to Berkeley City Code, Chapter 138, zoning relative to architectural features, another one we haven't seen in a while. We talked about this the last time, well, a few months ago, last time, and, I think this is what we decided, it's what I remembered, let me know if I'm right. Or if I missed something. We did receive one comment from, and I was going to ask him how to say his last name when he was here, but he had to miss our, our new Planning Commissioner, Joe Tangari. And he did pick up his packet, and he apologizes for not being here, he got called away for work. His suggestion was, let's see, I wonder if the first new sentence might need a word at the beginning for clarity, i.e. projecting architectural features or such architectural features. So I haven't looked at his email beyond what I'm reading to you right now, so. Oh, I see, saying such architectural, such architectural features shall not have a foundation and shall be above grade at least 12 inches.
So I have a question on this. Does this pertain to, like, in our downtown district where a lot of buildings are right on the property line? Right?
I mean, it certainly could, it's not in the residential, this mostly pertains to residential, but it doesn't say that.
Right.
This could be for other stuff.
Right, so it has to be, it can be into the setback, well, in a commercial area of downtown district, setback's the lot line, so we're kind of saying they, they can still have projections, 12 inches or-
Well, it says project into the required yard.
All right, so.
And if, I think if your yard is zero, do you see that as a loophole, Commissioner Morell?
We might want to look at a way of allowing something architectural in a resident, in the commercial district that's maybe 10, 15 feet above grade, architectural features.
We can't, we can't pass-
No?
The property line.
Okay.
If you're setback, if you're on the property line, two buildings, or even one building, and there's a property next to you, you can't cross that property line.
No, I'm thinking into like the sidewalk area.
That's a right-of-way, nope.
Yeah, that's the property line. All right, can't do it.
This, I think, works for both commercial and residential, it obviously applies to residential more so, but-
Right.
If there's zero setback, zero, two inches for zero is zero.
The reason why I'm bringing it up is, is I just read an article, I think it was in one of the papers about downtown Detroit, that a lot of these old buildings downtown, they took all the cornices off because 50, 60 years ago, some of them were starting to fail and crumble and fall and injure people or kill people, so they passed an ordinance and they all had to be removed. And now with a lot of the revitalization happening in downtown Detroit, they're putting those back in, and that's an architectural feature that projecting into the right-of-way.
Mr. The difference of, well, you know, the city of Detroit now has facade inspection, so that every five years, somebody goes up and looks at those cornices to make sure they're still hanging on the wall.
Right.
So, I mean, if you wanted to do something like that, I suppose projecting into the property line might seem a little more, a little less,
Okay.
A little more palatable, but I, I think, in all this, what's written here actually works pretty well for-
I have, I have a question about front yard versus front setback. If I, right now, half of my house is about 11 feet back from the front setback, so-
We're going to use your house as an example, your statistical outlier, yeah, yes.
Well, my house is so non-conforming, it's pitiful, but, but this is an instance where, I mean, if it was structurally feasible, I could extend 11 feet out before I ever got to the front setback in my yard. So my question is, is do we really want to say front yard? Because if, if a building is, if a house is already non-conforming, and they're 20 feet into the, into, into the, from the, from the property line instead of 25 feet, can their architectural features still stick out three feet?
No, because it's required front yard, it says required front yard. So if your house was 30 feet back, yes, you could project because you've got five extra feet, but-
So isn't that the front setback and not the front yard? I thought the front yard was wherever your house ended until you got to the front properly.
We could say front setback, required front yard would be the same as a setback.
Okay, well-
But we can say whichever you'd like, whatever you think would be clearer.
I'm only one vote, I mean, I'd vote for it this way, but it just seemed to me-
I'm all about clarity.
As a guy, you know, I might be looking at that going, hmm, where's my yard and where's my setback?
I think maybe you ought to put setback, I think maybe-
Okay, so front setback?
Yeah, I think it's better, I think it's clearer.
Okay.
Front and rear yard setback. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
To further answer Mr. Murad's question, this comes up. We, we do infill projects in communities downtown, and there may be a, a bank or something that has some nice stone cornices around the building, and we're building something next to them an inch or two away. Got to cut it off, it's on our property, or our, our client's property. And the, the way to do it is, you know, have that, because that owner gets very upset.
Right.
Especially half the time they don't get a notice, but they should, but-
And I think-
That's up to them at their point, if they want to put a cornice, everyone's, fine, but they have to remember, it's their peril that if someone ever builds to that property line, they, they have every right to have a smooth surface, so.
Yeah.
And it does happen.
I understand that, and I'm thinking more about this, thinking back on the discussion when we discussed this, I don't know how many months ago, it was kind of like to allow people to put some sort of a bump out to expand a little bit of living space, so.
No, no, we would allow, as far as signs or canopies, we allow those to be three feet into, but it has to be up, it has to be up, yeah.
I'm thinking like the, the old video store on Coolidge, they have the little, you know, that's built out of like steel over the windows.
The canopies, yeah.
Canopies, yeah, we allow that type of thing, okay.
And Berkeley Coney Island has the same thing, we've got those, yeah.
Yep.
So what we're saying here, I'm just, I'm going to back up, the two inches per foot, so if you have a 10-foot, going back to residential homes, residential properties, so if you have a 10-foot between your property line and the face of your structure, your house, we can go 20 inches into that, you can extend 20 inches into that prop, into that setback.
Yeah, you currently can do that.
Yeah.
We haven't had any real issues with that, that I'm asking, let me rephrase that, have we had any real issues with that?
You know, I, no, not, not that in particular, I think, I think something that is a growing pain that I see from my end of it with things is you have, people want to build in Berkeley, that's fantastic. Nobody's building a 900-square-foot bungalow anymore, and, you know, in order to make the house marketable for who is wanting to buy in Berkeley, it ends up being a house that is 25 feet wide, so it's as wide as it can go on a 40-foot-wide lot, and then, well, can I, you know, do a little this, a little this to bump it out here and there, or, you know, whether it's a fireplace, or bookcase, or stairs, and so I see that as a tension.
We're bending the rules, so to speak.
Well, not really, I mean, I think it says what, I mean, this is, that-
Well, that's what this is, you're bending, you're allowing, to have a straight line of a setback, you're allowing,
Correct, and architectural features, yes.
Under certain conditions to bend that, and that's exactly what we're doing. I just want everybody to realize that, say you have a standard five-foot and 10-foot setback on your property, excuse me, and, and, uh, well, you've been-
A constituent.
Been bugging me. So, just so, we, everybody realizes, in 10, in that 10-foot setback, regardless of what your neighbor has, you are allowed 20 inches, just doing the math, and I don't have a problem with it, I just want everybody to realize that.
Your five-foot setback neighbor only gets 10.
I get 10, because I was looking at doing such a thing. But then I looked at the bump out, after I drew it up, and it looked so stupid on the house, I said, hm, I guess I won't do that.
No, I have absolutely no, yeah, I have no issue with it, you know, if you, if you want somebody to look at your drawings, no.
No, he's the perfect guy.
No, I have no issue with it, I just want everybody to realize that's what we're doing. And, and your, your point exactly, that allows us to let them squeeze a little more out of their-
And that's not something that's, that's being proposed to change, right?
And it's not new, no, no, that's, I just want everybody to realize that.
Okay.
So, okay, good, I have no problem with it.
And Mr. Chair, Mr. Richardson? Uh, this is remind mark tonight. Is there a definition of architectural features elsewhere in the ordinance?
Oh, I forgot my codebook, I think there is. Shall I go get it and see?
Well, I, I'm of course asking out of a concern that that term is too vague without a definition, and, and there may be debates about what it includes, but-
I think that's a good point, it may be too vague or too narrow even.
I-
I think whatever the term is, the rest of it's fine, just if that is or is not the right term in our definitions, I think that's a very good point.
Okay, well, how about if I-
Check the definition.
I can grab it for next time, and-
But other than that, I think it's-
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't anticipate a problem coming up with a definition if we don't have one.
Sure.
We've used it before, the crossed-out line at the end says architectural features, so-
Well, I just don't know if, I think we defined it, but this ordinance is, it's old, so, predates me even, so.
Sure.
Features, okay.
All right, now, you want to, do you want to, you want us to review it again, or do we-
I think so, yeah.
Can we move it forward?
I, I would rather make sure you guys are good with architectural features.
Yeah, let's get the definition of architectural features.
All right.
Okay.
Item three.
Okay, item three, sorry, I meant two. Item three is discussion regarding possible changes to Berkeley City Code, Chapter 138, zoning relative to how building height is determined. Okay. So we talked about gambrils a lot, and I figured out what the pitches were, and gable, and we have definitions. Manzard, we hadn't really talked about, so that's why I have blanks on that.
Could I stop you before you get all into all that part?
Sure.
And go up to building heights for a minute?
Yeah.
You say the heights of a building shall be measured from the average established street grade to a point halfway between the eaves. All right. My house, and we discovered this when we put the new front sidewalk in, to the, to the house from the grade. My house is innate, is 18 inches above grade, the base of the house is 18 inches above grade.
Oh, so we shouldn't do street, we should do next to it, okay.
Should be-
I don't think we actually do street, now that I think about how it's practiced, okay.
I think you just say grade.
Grade somewhere, yeah.
Because that, that is a, it's implied, but it's pretty much a standard, the grade at the foundation wall, or at the building wall.
Average, average established, does it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what's my, that was my-
Thank you, yes.
Grade at foundation, whatever. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Moving on. Yes.
Fourth, fourth line down, the following shall be ex-cluded, that's one word.
Yeah, I know it is, I, again, not really, I don't think it was my typing, I think it was somebody else's, and it got scanned in that way.
Spaces are free.
So are there any golden slopes with manzard roofs, or?
We need to go out and measure McDonald's.
Is it just like a gambler, gambrel, but...
Typically steep, you, you know, Mr. Chairman, I meant to, I meant to check these. I have a couple, I think we all do, a couple books with definitions, historical definitions of things. I meant to check this and I didn't. I don't know if there's a standby, you know, we, 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 we talked about the gambler roof slope, and we talk about minimum three-twelve slope, which is pretty much due to shingle roofing.
Yeah, but it's...
Looking at residential.
Yeah, but it's building.
Three-twelve is pretty...
Michigan Residential Code, so we've got a...
Right.
Yeah.
But the manzard roof is basically, if you look around, is a pretty much meant to be a wall. More a wall than a roof. I don't know what that angle is, or should be, or... It's obvious what it is by the sketch here, but we've, we've, we feel we must define it, maybe some of us should actually look at those books.
I think actually, you don't need an angle. You need to define the X value and let Y be whatever it, ever it is.
Slope.
You know, if it's, you know, the, the manzard could be way out, and you know...
Well, that's true.
It, it's really that X dimension that I think matters most. And, and, you know, we like, for example, if I have a manzard roof that projects out twenty inches in my ten-foot setback,
Doesn't matter.
Of course, it wouldn't be a feature, because it'd be more than thirty percent of the area. But I'm, but again, this is, this is where it all starts coming together, folks. That projection, it, it's really the X value of
Right.
of the angle that's important. And, and that's what we have, we only really have one number to pick, so, so you don't need X and twelve, you just need...
And manzard roofs are usually expressed, like in the sketch, with a flat roof, but that's not necessarily true.
No, they usually have a hip at the top, yeah.
Well, it could be very shallow hip, you know, with a, a, a membrane roof instead of a shingle roof, but they're not always like that, and that's where it gets tricky, picking a number. If, if, if we just pick the X, it's no different than a flat roof, assuming the top's flat, but it's not always flat.
Well, again, if you want to get tricky in the way you frame the roof, you could have the edge of the manzard could go extend inside the, uh, the perimeter of the exterior. Now, I don't think a sane carpenter would build that way, but you could.
Just to get a little extra height.
Well, yeah, exactly.
Right.
So, I think we need that, you know, that, the X dimension is, is kind of what... Does he, the Y dimension doesn't matter. I mean, if, I don't, I mean, to me, it's use a manzard, go to jail, I think they're ugly, I would never use them, but... The fact is, you see them all the time on apartment buildings, we, we fix them all the time, so... Whoa, boy, if you take your manzard all the way to the ground, or twelve inches above the ground.
Good.
You have a building that's all roof.
So, simply, I'd like to say, just like a flat roof, you, it's the top, the, the, the gravel stop, the whatever at the top, the coping is the height, but that assumes a flat roof, and they're not always flat roofs.
Well, that's, yeah, that's the height, but again, we, we're trying to define what's a manzard and what's a wall. Certainly, you get to a point where...
That's right. It can be vertical.
Right.
A manzard, a lot of people think a manzard roof is a vertical wall with shingles on it. I mean, you can do that.
You're, you're absolutely...
Somebody else could do that.
But you're absolutely right that the roof height needs to be measured from the top of the manzard, because if you go halfway up, you really could... You really could be, you really could be gaming the system by putting a manzard roof on your house.
Yeah.
You could add a lot more area if you're only gonna go halfway up the manzard.
Well, do we want to define it like a gambrel roof? Otherwise, it's a flat roof?
I don't know.
Well, I think you, I think you want to define it, from a height standpoint, you want to define it by a flat roof. We just need to decide if we need, if we need to regulate the X dimension or the Y dimension. Do we even need to regulate that?
Well, the Y dimension should be the top of the...
Well, once you get up to the top, then again, how far down can I go? Or do I, do we care?
I don't...
Go all the way down to twelve inches above grade?
We're still, we're talking about height to buildings, whether, where the bottom of it starts or finishes, I don't know if it...
The height of the building, I think she has defined, it's just, she needs to add the part about manzard up here in the, up here in the building height description, as, as to being just like a, a flat roof, or a manzard, measured from the street grade to the highest point. But then the definition of a manzard, maybe, do we need one? Is it...
I think that's a manzard right there, without trying to put it in words, just like everything else.
Right.
It's evident by looking at these pictures.
You're assuming a flat roof.
Well, we say the top of the...
I have a question about this. I think would be desirable to define manzard, why can't it just be defined as a flat roof? Or, uh, a roof with a very shallow, uh, peak that we could stipulate? That way, you wouldn't be able to cheat. I mean, I think right now, our discussion is putting the name of the roof ahead of the actual design of the roof.
Because sometimes those, the, the top part that could be flat, sometimes they do design it as like a hip-style roof.
And I don't know which would be, so, I would, maybe we have to say either or, but... But I mean to avoid the problem that you're alluding to about...
We can grab a, we can grab a definition of a manzard roof out of one of the historical dictionaries, architectural dictionaries. I don't know if we need that, maybe we do.
Well, I mean, you can just say a a manzard was a roof sloping downward in four parts, ends and sides from a central ridge, period. I added the other part because the issue, we haven't had a problem with manz, manzard roofs, but the gambrel roof, that's something with garage designs that we have had an issue with, and people making it have a flat top to get a bigger garage.
Right.
And so, we did feel a need to define that, so that the proportions were sufficiently gambrel-like.
So then...
I don't know if that's gonna be an issue, I, I don't see a lot of, you know, nineteen-seventies, may, maybe it'll be something that comes back.
It might come back, you know?
It might.
Yeah.
Everything goes around, comes around.
That's true.
So then why don't we do this? Each side of a which has a shallower slope angled not less than, use the flat roof definition, right?
Okay.
Of a steeper one angled not greater than, say seventy-five degrees, eighty degrees?
That may be fair, Commissioner Murad, because we're talking about flat roof, less than three-twelve pitch.
Right.
The top of the, you know, as we said, it's basically a flat roof, but it could have an angle, a slope on it, so we'll use the flat roof definition. I think that's fair. Okay, we got that far.
Okay.
We still have to put a height to it. Where it's measured. But a flat roof is measured from the eve,
Right.
even though there may be a pitch above it.
Correct.
Manzard could be measured from the eve, even though there may be a pitch above it. That's a beauty. I'm good.
Okay.
Everybody good?
Good.
Say that again, huh?
Hmm?
So what do we want, I'm sorry, I did not, I've got angled each side, what do we want to say? I'm sorry, I did not follow this at all.
Angle not less than what the flat roof, which is a three-twelve pitch.
Three-twelve, yep, I've got that.
And then, not greater than an eighty percent?
Okay, I don't want to do a percent, because that's hard to, that's why I've got twenty, I've got pitches in here, because that's...
Okay. So come up with a pitch and...
Okay.
Eighty percent?
You want eighty degrees?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or eighty degrees, not percent.
That's fine.
That's what I meant to say.
I, I know. I got it. Okay. Okay. I'll get back to you on that one. And I'll fix the excluded and the grades.
Okay.
Okay.
See what happens there. Probably not a big, big issue.
You want to bring that back, too?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, item number four.
Uh, discussion regarding clarification to Berkeley City Code, Article Six, Administration and Enforcement. It was noted by a resident who was doing a search on our website, and he did a, you know, find every rezoning, and found that in my attempt to standardize all of the different, whether it's special land use, or site plan, or variance, or an appeal, um, when we did this, I tried to standardize so that it had the same, the notice of hearing, it had the same, it read the same, depending on which section you were in. And in my boiler planning, I boiler plated language with regard to rezonings, and that was a mistake, and nobody caught it until recently. So, I've noted the changes. This first one is under variances. ZBA doesn't deal with rezonings, they deal with variances, and instead of saying with regard to our proposed for rezoning, I've got the notice shall be sent by mail to owners of property for which the variance is being considered. And likewise, the next item, six-twenty-five, notice of hearing is for appeals, which the zoning board of appeals also deals with. Notice shall, shall be sent to mail to, um, owners of property, um, which the appeal is being considered, not the rezoning, so it's... It was something that got passed everybody.
Okay. Any questions? Nope. All right.
I want to set that one for public hearing.
I guess this one, we can for, push this one through. Do we have to have a, uh...
You should, yeah.
Yeah.
Public hearing on this?
Yep.
All right, then, let's schedule a public hearing for...
I will do that. Thank you.
For October.
Yes.
And be sure to let the newspapers know.
Yes.
So at this point, I'll entertain citizens' comments. Hearing no citizens' comments, I'll move on to liaison reports. So... Chamber, we'll start with you.
We'll start with the chamber, good, okay. Let's see, October tenth will be the State of the City at Farina's. We had a report on the pub crawl. They had a hundred and forty-six, uh, participants, which was more than last year. I think it actually was the largest turnout that they had. They're doing a second edition of the map, planning another that map, map I distributed to everybody.
Oh, okay, yeah.
They're gonna do it a little bit bigger fold-out, so it'll be larger type, and more area, and more advertising, so... Uh, no tame, timetable on that yet, but they're gon, they're working on it. Uh, there's a golf outing coming up. I have a flyer on it, hang on. I knew it was something I couldn't attend, it might have been last weekend. Yes, it was, last Friday.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So... And they are working on, uh, plans for a shopping event around the holiday. And that's about, and the other thing, they're, uh, they're looking for some new board members. I think one or two of the board members, their terms are up and they're gonna step down, so...
Question?
Mr. Richardson?
What time is the State of the City, uh...
Eleven-thirty to one-thirty.
Thank you.
Actually, I received an email today about it, I will be forwarding it on to all of you tomorrow, hopefully. October tenth, it's a Friday, if I'm not mistaken. Okay?
All righty.
Yeah, I think is about it.
DDA? You've passed all your notes to everybody? Do you have any comments, or anything?
I eliminated some of it. The, I didn't get to this meeting, and I went off of Penelope's notes that she gave me, because I missed it. And what I included here is, is the new business. And what I said last month about how they were ignoring, um, Coolidge, they're not.
Really?
There's a couple of, there's a couple of people on the DDA that are very much, where some of us are. You know, the road diet and, and, and making Coolidge more of a place. So, that's good. The owners of Twenty-four Seconds are waiting, as far as I know, waiting to close on Hiller's Market. They're gonna put in an Irish pub there, and it's a big one, it's six, approximately sixty-nine-hundred square feet. And some of it is going to be, uh, retail space, and some of it is this Irish pub, and I'm gonna be interested to see how they divide it all up. Jumping over to the hometown, town holiday event, they're targeting a hot, slightly higher price to do it, because they want two trolleys to move people over, you know, all over the city for these things, this event. And hopefully, it will include Coolidge when they get this all together.
Environmental?
Uh, environmental committee did not meet during the month of September. I do anticipate having a report for you at next month's meeting.
I guess there's anything from Parks and Rec. City Council meeting, the last meeting, um, the folks, uh, who are working on the new pub, we went before the council, because they had to get approval for the liquor license, which is being processed, and council had to approve that, so that was approved by council, moving forward. Uh, Big B Coffee was also on the agenda, and Big B Coffee was also approved the rezoning of the, uh, for the outdoor seating, so... So that was all approved, and I think those were the really two big items that sort of affected all of us in one way or another. That was on the council, last council meeting, it was, there was only one council meeting in September. Hey, we go back to the regular two meetings in October, I assume.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So that's all I have for council. So then, moving onward to the next thing on our agenda, I guess we can run around the room and see what we've, anybody's got any commissioner and staff comments? Mr. Martin Smith, anything tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I ranted so long last month about Coolidge traffic that I'm still worn out.
Okay.
So I have nothing else.
Mr. Richardson?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Pop?
Nothing else.
Mr. Murad?
I have a couple things. People keep, a few people keep asking me about the building at, uh, Coolidge and, uh, Edgewood, about the closed-off sidewalk, when that can be done.
It's getting gorgeous.
That, where all last winter, Coolidge, the sidewalk was all blocked off.
Yes, it's not, it's not closed off now.
The Edgewood sidewalk is.
Edgewood side.
Edgewood side.
I thought it was up to the sidewalk, oh, okay. Um, so what is the, what is their question?
Just when's the sidewalk opening back up, are they gonna be...
Don't know, he is working on it.
Okay.
It does look nice, though, though, like...
Yeah, it does.
It's looking gorgeous.
Mm-hmm.
It's just him, and occasionally it sounds like, I don't know, it's a kid or...
It's a long time.
There's a man and a dog for a while, working on it, yeah.
Mr. Mur...
I guess all I had...
Mr. Murrow? Oddly enough, I have nothing.
Ms. Parkler?
Nothing.
Ms. Fancy?
It's been really busy in the building department. We, uh, haven't had a building clerk since August fourteenth, and I am hopeful that we've got somebody that's gonna be starting October sixth, and, but it's been, it's been a very busy month to, uh, have, I'm very grateful for our licensing clerk, Denise Vaughn, she has, um, stepped up and been working, um, full-time, essentially, and I've been working more hours, but it is still a lot with everything, and, um, doing everything, so... If anything was wrong with the packets, thank you for your patience, and, um, uh, for October, you're going to have, uh, the Coolidge between, uh, Twelve Mile and Webster has to come before you for review, because it's a capital improvement, that's state law. it's a capital improvement, that's state law.
Oh, okay.
You get to have a say.
Oh, okay.
You might not have your way, but you get to have a say on it. So, um, that, that is what the law basically says. You get to review it.
We have to review it.
So that, that will be on your agenda.
Is that gonna be a presentation by HRC, or is they just gonna send us a thing?
I don't know if HRC will be here, or just Derek Schuler will be here, but you will have plans, and you'll get to peruse them ahead of time.
All right.
Okay?
Good.
That's all I've got.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I-
Mr. Richardson.
Forgot to mention something. I, uh, saw Commissioner Morrell on television, uh-
Tonight?
Not, not too long, not, not tonight, uh, not too long ago, uh, in connection with a, um, neighborhood lending library. Uh, and, uh, I just wanted to express, uh, my gratitude as a Berkeley resident for his civic-mindedness in participating in that, that project. Uh, it just seems like, um, it's the kind of project that does what people hope it will do, get people out, and talking to each other, and promoting a spirit of neighborliness. So I think it's all good, and I just wanted to mention it.
I did see that too. Congratulations.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I will say-
For those of us that didn't see you, when were you on television?
Um, would have been about a week ago on WDIV. They, they called me, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and they said, can we come out and interview you?
How did they find out about it?
There was a, um, another Little Free Library owner cyber stalked me and got my email address. She knew, she knew the people at WDIV, and, and they were doing a story on her, and they wanted more libraries and the thing, so.
Cool.
She even said, I cyber stalked you, and she broke, so. She, she found me through something, I don't know what. Um, I will say that it does, you know, my neighbors and I were talking, and it seems like the times we get to really get out and talk to each other is when there's some kind of natural disaster, like the flood, or the storm, and, you know, we're all out there picking up debris, and hey, look, the neighbors are out, and you all end up talking. And, well, Little Free Library actually did, uh, does exactly that. We really have met a lot of people with it, and I will say right now, there can be more than one in the city of Berkeley, if somebody else wants to build one. There's nothing wrong with it. Um, the code official hasn't come and told me I can't have it, so that's cool.
Isn't that nice?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're not hard to build, and they don't have to be anything special, but they do work, and, and they are a great thing.
That's cool. Yes, I saw it. Congratulations. You have found your civic-mindedness, and all the things you do. Thank you. I don't have anything special this evening, so with that, I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is made.
Motion is made by Commissioner Morrell. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Merritt. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.